All right, let's get started.
Sure.
The city attorney. You good? Can we start the meeting now?
Yes, sir.
With your permission? Okay, let me get on the right page myself. Let's call the Order of Spark City Council Meeting for Monday, February 28th with a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Duncan.
Here.
City Manager Krutz.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our invocation, Pastor Joshua Knudsen from the Horizon Christian Church.
Good afternoon. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here. We thank you for this city. God, we thank you for these council members. And God, we ask that you would give them wisdom and that your presence would be here. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your favor, your grace, and protection over this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Remain standing for the pledge. Bill, can you enunciate, lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, sir.
Lead us to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, gotta make sure I don't whack my knee on there. All right, we're on to public comment. Madam Clerk, we have a public comment. I have one card, Mr. Bill Wagner. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak, please fill out a card and hand it to the clerk, please.
Thank you, John. We're in the message. I know. Okay, great. Thank you.
We put a seatbelt on there, I think, too. We didn't want to buck you off.
Yes, I realize that. Mr. Mayor and council members, for the record, my name is Bill Wagner. I'm here to talk about the Sparks Annual Report. Neil, I understand why you were smiling at John's report. Both John and Allison, I'm guessing Julie, selected the right people to put this amazing book together. They used a lot of Pareto charts to show the difference between '20 and '21. They discussed extensively all six categories in the index with Pareto chart photos. Now, the only thing was missing was a number sheet showing the line items, the budget versus the actual. Okay? My hat's off. You're all involved. Great job. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Bill. Hey, anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Looking for approval of the agenda. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
I got a motion to second any further discussion. Now, I switch to please vote. We ran a non-electronic meeting this morning, so I had to remember.
Getting ready for you to ask me.
Yes. Did we vote?
Yes.
I don't see it.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. I can't imagine that's a controversy, but minutes, looking for approval of the minutes. From February 14th. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the minutes of the Spark City Council Meeting Workshop to, for February 14th, 2022, as presented.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Got a motion to second any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item seven. Which one do you have, Neil? Seven one and seven two.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. For the record, Neil Krutz, your city manager. Item 7.1 is to announce a single vacancy on the Sparks Building Code Board of Appeals for an electrical engineer or an electrical contractor with at least 10 years of experience, five years being in responsible charge of the work. This position is for a two-year term ending March 31st of 2024. And applications for this vacancy will be accepted until Friday, March 4th at 5:00 PM. 7.2 is for the Truckee River Fund Advisory Committee, and we have a single vacancy there as well for a Sparks representative. They must be a resident of the city, and they will serve at the pleasure of the Spark City Council. Applications for this vacancy will be accepted until Friday, March 11th at 5:00 PM. If you're interested in serving on either one of these boards, please go to the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. That's all one big word. Once you're there, fill out a community service application. You do that by clicking on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commission or Committee. Fill out the form and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Thank you. All right, 7.3, Presentation Nevada Department of Transportation's Sustainable Funding Alternative Study.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. It's my honor today to introduce to you Nick Johnson. He is from Project Management NDOT, and he is going to be giving you a presentation about funding sustainability.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect. Well, good afternoon, and for the record, Nick Johnson, NDOT Project Management. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to come in here and speak today, filling in for Sandra Rosenberg to, you know, give you guys a presentation on a working group that was formed through the last legislative session to look at transportation funding and looking at new sustainable sources as we continue into the future. I'll mention and I'll talk a little bit more. It's not necessarily an NDOT study, but it's a study being conducted by a 29-member advisory working group, and NDOT's facilitating this, the study itself. So, and really what the purpose of this presentation is here today is we're at a point where we're trying to get out across the state and inform as many of the local governments or really any of the organizations or groups that want to learn more about what this advisory working group is looking into and what they're studying and what they're going to prepare for the upcoming legislative session. So I'll go, so just getting started, I'm going to first start with some of the background, some of the data and statistics to kind of frame the need or the challenge, then talk a little bit about the bill, what the goals are of the study, who the members themselves, and then start getting into, you know, some of the funding mechanisms and how everyone is looking at that, and then our path moving forward here till mid and even the end of this year. So this first slide here, there's a bunch of different statistics up here that I think we're all very familiar with here in Washoe County. The population growth more than doubling over, you know, since 2010, but I think one that's most telling is in the bottom in the light blue, the vehicle miles traveled across the state is more than tripled since 2010. And then when you couple that with increased construction costs, it's making it, you know, more challenging to provide the new transportation infrastructure that's needed, but also just even maintain the existing infrastructure that we have out there. And, you know, at the state level, one of the primary, you know, sources of revenue is from fuel tax. You know, goes into the state highway fund along with other taxes for, you know, on vehicles that are collected through the DMV. But even at the local level itself, too, it's not the primary source, but it plays a big role. And as we're, you know, moving forward, there's more electric vehicles on the roadway or even hybrid vehicles that have a higher miles per gallon rating, so the amount of fuel tax going in is slowly declining. And just to demonstrate some of that, this, these graphs here in red, what you see is, you know, the rate at which the fuel taxes are going into the state highway fund compared to the green line, which is the vehicle miles traveled. And the VMT is now, you know, at the rate at which it's increasing is, you know, easily surpassing the amount of fuel tax going into the highway fund. And then this is also just another statistic on that. Back in 2010, the amount of fuel tax paid per driven mile was, you know, about 1.27 cents per user on the roadway. Now, you fast forward to 2020, and that's dropped to about 1.03 cents per miles driven, so about a 20% decrease over 10 years, and it's continuing on that decline. So that, that kind of framed, you know, kind of the challenge or need that we're faced with, and so looking ahead, Advisory Bill 413 asked NDOT to, let's look at that a little closer, and it actually started back in 2019 with a Senate concurrent resolution, which formed a group to look at electric vehicles and impact on transportation funding, and from that was a recommendation to do this study itself. And then so going into the 2021 legislative session, AB 413 was passed, and it directed NDOT to convene an advisory working group of no more than 30 members to study this, look at some other studies that have been conducted, and then come up with some recommendations to bring back to the legislature in 2023. So what you see here on this, you know, the two bullets here, the first kind of paragraph kind of outlines at a high level the goals of what this group is looking at, you know, as a result of AB 413. Two, two things that came out of that, directed the group to look at two different studies. It was the Utah Ruck Charge or Road User Charge that was passed in their last legislative session, essentially creating a tax on electric vehicles, and then I believe it's the, if I say this right, the NDRC, the National Defense Resource Council, conducted a study on tax on miles per gallon. So those who were brought forward to the group and looked at amongst many other studies or bills that have been passed in other states to create more sustainable funding. And then the second paragraph here is, is the, kind of the mission statement of the group, to really look at new approaches to funding transportation and all transportation multimolas, I should say, for all users, you know, considering the equity of those users, as well as reductions in greenhouse gas. Now, the final thing that the group is, needs to take into consideration, or at least look at, not necessarily make any recommendations for policies or things like that, but what is the impact of land use and smart growth on our transportation system and how that relates to funding our transportation system? So a little bit about the advisory working group, I'm not going to read all of this in detail, but what you see up here is kind of the requirements of the membership of this group, so there's 29 members. It makes up a lot of the local and state agencies, energy, environmental, minority group organizations, geographic, you know, it represents geographically the entire state of Nevada, or really any organizations that have a vested interest in the transportation infrastructure here in the state. And then on the last slide, there'll be a link to the website or show the, the website address, and you can go there and actually see who the members are and who's part of this advisory working group. And so this is the schedule over the course of a year for this working group, and for a study of this size, it's actually a pretty short period of time to convene 29 people and to work through this. And so we started meeting immediately, right after the last legislative session there in July, and organized and started going through the background and data, and now we're getting to a point where we're looking at, you know, all options and different funding mechanisms that could support, excuse me, a sustainable, you know, transportation funding for the future. And then as we move into this year, the spring and the summer, it's starting to pare that down to what, what are the recommendations of the group to bring back to the legislature and then put that into report and get it back to them by the end of the year. Okay, so as we start looking at, or as a group, I should say, starts looking at. Okay, so as we start looking at, or as a group, I should say, starts looking at these different funding mechanisms, one of the first things we wanted to do was kind of develop some outcomes or goals that we want these mechanisms to provide. So we've called them the guiding principles, and really it's, they'll use this to take each of those mechanisms and kind of compare it back to these these goals and say, how do they meet these, and are they achieving what the group, you know, wants to get out of each of these funding mechanisms? And so again, I'm not going to read in detail, but there's a couple of them here, you know, sustainability and sufficiency. Will these mechanisms be sustainable into the future, and will they generate enough revenue to meet the needs? Equity, both at the user and social level, flexibility, so that it can be applied to all programs and projects, transportation-related, and different modes, reductions in greenhouse gas, and then last transparency and the efficiency and ease of compliance. So does a taxpayer know where the money's going, how it's being used, and what's the cost of administering these and collecting? And so a lot of, they differ from mechanism to mechanism. And so this slide here is kind of an all-in inclusive list of ideas, options, potential funding mechanisms that were brought forward to the group or ideas that the advisory working group had. Now, last month, or, yeah, last month in January, when the group met, the goal was to try to whittle this list down to, you know, a handful of these that we could focus on, and unfortunately, there's only one eliminated from this entire list, and that was twenty-three, the payroll tax. So that's no longer on there. So the group still has some work to do, but I think what's starting to be seen is that there's not one of these, there's a silver bullet that's going to solve the problem, but more or less maybe a package or different options to help meet that need that's out there. And so next steps, as I mentioned earlier, this kind of just describes the schedule for the upcoming meetings. There's a lot of work still to do, but it's really getting into the analysis of these mechanisms, packaging them, right sizing them, and then so that a recommendation can be made later this spring, you know, summertime, and then we can write the report and bring that back to the legislature by the end of the year. And so last slide, there's the website address and information. So all the, all the information that's been presented at each of these meetings is on the website. If you want to go and look at it, some of the background and data and analysis, these are public meetings, and so if any of you are interested in attending, you could do so as well, or you can watch them online on NDOT's YouTube channel. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Questions from the council? Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, it'd be, we've been following this issue for a little while, kind of something we talk about in a lot of different meetings, and so it'd be great at the very end of this to hear, get some presentation on what you found, because obviously it's going to affect us all, how this is going. So I just think it's great. Thanks for being ahead of it, and would love to see the end result of that.
Anyone else? Going to be interesting to see how this shakes out. I saw the Utah model, which is pretty interesting for electric vehicles, so I know that's one of the items on the table. Lot of work to do, yeah?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's move on to seven point four. Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Staff Who Received Awards From the Nevada Water Environment Association. Mr. Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Michael Drinkwater, your treatment plant manager. My privilege to be before you today for the first time in a very long time, not asking for money. No.
Yeah, where's Casey at?
He is not here today. I sent him back to the plant. No, I'm privileged to work with a great number of motivated, dedicated, intelligent human beings who do a great job on behalf of the citizens of the city of Sparks. Recently, three of those individuals were recognized by the Nevada Water Environment Association at the annual conference for their exceptional work, recognized amongst their colleagues around the state as being exceptional in their respective tasks, one of whom was actually acknowledged at the national level in her particular area of expertise. So seated right behind me are those three individuals. I have Mr. Sui Hui, who has received the Lifetime Service Award for twenty-five years of service to the organization. Among many other things he's done for them, he keeps their website up and running. And it is, I guess, I'm pained and privileged to announce that tomorrow is his last day with the city of Sparks. He is retiring, and it hurts for us, but we're happy for him. Seated next to him is Mr. Alan Villalobos, Operator of the Year. Alan, not only in his regular duties as operator, but was also critical in our pilot testing of the Aqua Narita process at Tom Wharf and kept, was the hands-on-the-ground, if you, or boots-on-the-ground, if you will, of, you know, making that pilot test functioning. And finally, Ms. Amy Egan, our lab manager, was acknowledged nationally as the Water Quality Analyst of the Year from the Water Environment Federation for her professional skill and getting the numbers right, to give us the information so we can make the decisions we need to make. And we wanted to take just a few minutes of your time to let you know some of the people who work for you and some of the great work that they do, and with that, if you don't mind, I'd like them just to say a few words, and I'll get out of your way.
I guess I will start from the beginning of the line here. Oh, I've, I've worked for.
Yeah, we have millions.
I'm sorry.
Millions of people are watching us on Facebook, so we want to make sure that you can be heard.
My name is Sui Hui. I have worked for the city of Sparks Treatment Plant for about twenty-five years. I am the Control Systems Programmer. I will be retiring tomorrow, and I've had a great career here. I want to say that, you know, I've, this has been one of the best jobs I've ever had. The city has taken great care of me, and this is, you know, I'm leaving super happy, and I am, I don't know, it's very ecstatic for retirement at the same time, but I will miss everybody here. Love, love working on the plant and all the people that are there, so that's, I think that's how I got it, unfortunately, from the top of my head, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Alan Villalobos. I'm kind of opposite end to Sui. I'm four years in at Tom Wharf. Kind of operator, so kind of there's quite a few of us, but, you know, we enjoy what we do. We're glad that you guys know the importance of the plant, and I know we don't see you all very much. We're kind of secluded in our own little corner, but I'm glad to be with the city, and I don't plan on going anywhere soon, so I'm happy.
We definitely know how important it is when your toilet does not flush.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Egan. I'm the lab manager at Tom Wharf, and I just want to take this time to say that I was honored and humbled that Casey Mensor would nominate me for such a thing and that Michael supported the decision. I work with a really, really amazing group of people out there, and I really have to make sure that I acknowledge that the lab staff, the lab staff is absolutely phenomenal. I mean, they really keep everything going, so I couldn't, I couldn't be here talking without them, so.
Congratulations. It's a big honor. You can take a picture, Julie, with the council. Okay?
You guys are in the middle.
Oh, we're in the middle.
We're going to hold you up.
Wow.
Put your wallet when you leave.
I'm more of a watch type of guy.
I'll protect the water.
Thank you.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have congrats.
You enjoy your time.
Long career.
So it's the youngest kids.
Thirty-two year old.
I know, we're getting tired of hearing this.
Should have bought crypto at high school.
Don't renegade in two years. Easy to retire.
All right, let's move on to item seven point five. Presentation from the Regional Transportation Commission Sparks Boulevard Widening Project and Initial Landscape Concepts. I saw you guys sitting out in the courtyard. What a beautiful day. I was jealous. They've had us in the basement all day. Tied up.
Dungeon, yeah.
Mayor, members of council, I'm Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. The R T C is here today to give you an update on their Sparks Boulevard project. You may remember that this is divided into two projects, an early action project from Greg Street to I eighty, and a second project from I eighty to Bering. So they'll give you an update on the status of those, as well as introduce you to some of the landscape opportunities that they're seeing. As introducing you to Jeff Wilbrecht, who is the project manager from the R T C, and Lindsay Green, who's a consultant from Atkins.
Welcome.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Jeff Wilbrecht. I'm with the R T C. I'm the project manager on the project. This is Lindsay. She's with Atkins. She's going to, that's our design consultant, so she'll kind of help get into some of the.
Give us your name for the record, too.
My name is Lindsay Green. I'm with Atkins, landscape architect.
Yeah, thank you. And so as Amber was saying, yeah, I'm here to provide a presentation, kind of an update on the project and get into some of the details of where we're going.
Get you to move that mic towards you a little bit more. We want to make sure our millions of viewers can hear you.
Absolutely. Thank you, yes. So I'm here to just provide an update on the Sparks Boulevard project and then kind of hit some of the highlights of where we're at and the things that we've been doing, and just kind of give a timeframe and remind you of where this project's going and what we're up to. So if you recall, I did a presentation to you guys a while back via Zoom and just kind of highlighted the findings of our alternatives analysis, and that kind of really helped us define what we were doing in the corridor. We knew the project goals of widening the road and increasing multimodal and connectivity in that regard, but really what that started to look like in formalizing plans relative to those goals. Following that, we started performing an environmental assessment on the project, and that's really specifically on the north phase of the project. And if you recall, Amber was talking about, we've separated this project into two phases. There's a south phase, that's our really early action project, and then the north phase, which is widening from essentially the freeway up towards Bering Boulevard and Reed High School. And that north phase, there's some elements in that that really warranted environmental assessments. So that's a kind of a higher-level analysis and investigation that we performed to identify all the impacts of the project and look at how those impacts kind of relate to the design plans, what we can do to mitigate them, how all that kind of comes together. So that's currently under review by NDOT and your staff at the city of Sparks, and we're, and NDOT, and sorry, F H W A. We've also, oh wait, sorry, we've also just recently completed the south phase plans, so that's that early action project that we're getting ready to go to construction on this summer, and that's going to be the widening from Greg Street up to the freeway, actually just up to Lincoln. And that project is going to take place pretty much all summer long. It is going to be night work. There's going to be some marathon weekend or marathon shift work that we'll have to work through, and we'll be doing lots of outreach and communication in regards to when those events occur and that kind of stuff. And then, you know, we're currently working on final design, and that's kind of where, sorry, the final design of phase two, and that's why we're here today, to kind of just provide you a status update, because that's a little bit, it's actually a much larger project, much more complex design, and there's some other nuances and details that are, we really want to start sharing with you. And as we design this project, I want to kind of highlight that we've been doing these P M T meetings, what we call them, project management team meetings. So your staff at City of Sparks is a part of the team, NDOT's part of the teams, R T C's part of the team, our consultant groups are part of the team. We meet every month to kind of talk about the project, the highlights, the various details, to make sure that we're all working together and achieving, you know, the project goals. The landscape presentation that we're going to provide to you came from those, and so we had a, in December, we met kind of as our P M T team and looked at all these different alternatives with your city staff and came down to what we've kind of finalized into, you know, has been bought in by all the team members, your staff, your senior leadership at the city. So it's a really great design. It's really kind of promoting the North Truckee Drain. I'm not going to steal Lindsay's thunder, but it's been a great process with your staff, so I just want to really highlight that. So I'll hand it over to Lindsay. She's the landscape architect, and she's done a lot of work thus far to kind of help us navigate the landscape and opportunities on the project, so take it away.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I'm really excited to work on this project for the city of Sparks. I love parks and trails, and trails especially, so it's a great project to work on. So as Jeff mentioned, we did go through a design workshop process. One of the first pieces of that design process that we went through was the Landscape Opportunities and Constraints map. And this map just basically shows us potential for landscape treatment areas in relation to the proposed North Truckee Drain and the Sparks Boulevard project itself. So we actually have this broken up into four different pieces. So on the first one, I want to kind of orient you, phase two actually begins on Lincoln Way, but as you can see to the south is the I eighty interchange at Sparks Boulevard, and then as we move north, or sorry, first I wanted to tell you that. So on each four of these maps, we show potential landscape treatment areas. We show the potential, or the proposed multi-use trail. We are going to show some potential trail nodes, areas that we can kind of enhance a little bit. We also show on, at least on this slide, a connection to the Truckee River Green Belt, so adjacent trails. And then we do show on here retaining walls, evaluated noise barriers, and existing retaining walls. So the next one, this one goes, let's see, we're going north, sorry. So this one's kind of centered on Prater Way. One of the potential trail nodes that we're going to, well, that we are proposing is right here, just north of Prater Way. It's kind of a nice area for rest node or what we're calling activity nodes, which we'll get into later. Then going further north, our kind of central node, we're calling a primary node, would be kind of in the middle. It really has a nice area of the North Truckee Drain around it, kind of a nice little piece. And then moving north, to the north of the project, we have one more potential trail node at Bering and Sparks Boulevard, and it's adjacent to the Edward C. Edward C. Reed High School. It has a lot of commercial areas around it and residential. And the next one? So these are kind of the items that we gain from the Opportunities and Constraints map. Kind of some general opportunities are to, with almost any trail, is to enhance the pedestrian safety by creating more safe, comfortable, engaging spaces. We want to invite the users to actually use the space, and that makes it safer. Like I said, we want to engage users, young and old, by creating some trail activity zones, especially in these COVID days. Increased access to nature is really important to everyone's health and well-being, especially in an urban setting, so that's an opportunity. We want to provide connections to the regional trails in the area and then create new engaging spaces while also aiming to keep maintenance activities to a minimum as much as possible. Some of the constraints that we have for the project, we want to minimize the impact to the North Truckee Drain. It is a working drain, drainage area. One constraint that this gives us is that we do have a limited amount of space to enhance these nodes. Portions of the multi-use trail have a minimal width to create intentional buffers between pedestrians and the traffic, although the roadway plan itself has some safety measures like barrier rails and things of that nature, so that's kind of mitigated there. Potential utility conflicts with any urban project or most projects that I work on, we have utility conflicts. So we just try to mitigate that as much as possible, prevent as much as possible. Maintenance, we have various maintenance constraints. There's the staffing, there's trash that could collect on the trail, there's vandalism, potential for vandalism. Those are all kind of key considerations. And then a lack of ingress and egress at some locations along. And then, a lack of ingress and egress at some locations along the trail, that could pose a safety concern. And then, budgetary constraints are always, sometimes a constraint on projects. And one way that we can mitigate that is by creating some enhanced nodes, and then we can have more of a muted design aesthetic on the rest of the trail. That's one proposed option. So then, specific to this project and its programming opportunities, and the themes that you'll see in just a few minutes, we have a creation of theme nodes at select locations along the trail, which we went over in the Opportunities and Constraints. We can potentially include activity nodes. They're just small-scale passive activity areas that are suitable for a trail. We want to celebrate the natural context of the area through native planting some materials. That also makes it more low maintenance by using native plantings. And then, there's typical trail enhancements, ADA accessibility, there's benches for resting, trash receptacles, potential for including dog waste receptacles. Trail mileage markers are always a key element on a trail that is helpful to the user. Shade, and then potential for fitness and skills elements. So now, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the landscape treatment. Again, this kind of keys in with our ability or our opportunity to create, create an engaging space, but also try to keep the maintenance to a minimum. So some of these landscape elements would be strictly for slope stabilization. We would have native seeding and native plant material. Shade trees, because you do want to provide shade on a trail. And then, boulders and rock mulch. So those are kind of some of the key elements and materials. So did you want to talk about this a little bit?
Sure.
Okay.
So, as we went through those constraints and opportunities that Lindsay talked about, we kind of, and knowing the nodes that we're gonna be looking for, this node right here is the one that's just south of Springland Drive, No Calhoun. And this is just kind of the general concept of what we're, kind of, those opportunities and constraints kind of bring to us, bring to the opportunity, or bring to the potential for what we can do at a node. And so, there's benches, there's kind of some, you know, as Lindsay was saying, enhanced landscape aesthetic. And this just becomes a kind of a stopping point for people using the trail to, you know, have a rest, or use, you know, there's, you know, jungle gym types, not jungle gym, but-
Like fitness elements, or-
Fitness elements, and speaking with your staff, we really wanted to highlight the North Truckee Drain, the Truckee River, and use as many natural elements as possible to, that seems like would fit into that, the North Truckee Drain itself, by using native plantings, boulders, and those types of things.
Real quick, sorry.
Sure.
Just wanted to talk about, so out of the three alternatives, discovering the North Truckee Drain was something that really resonated with both Sparks and RTC. So that's why we went with this theme. And some of the design elements that we could use there, we want to have some enhanced pavement surfacing to depict the native flora and fauna of the area. And like you mentioned before, like, natural materials and elements, benches, trash receptacles, things like that. We wanted to design these nodes to work with the North Truckee Drain, not really against it. And just kind of have a natural peaceful area for either rest, or if they want to, the trail user wants to add in some fitness activity. This would be at one of the primary nodes.
And then, yeah, the other one is up near Reed High School. And so this is one that we think would get a lot more use, just because of the students, you know, walking back and forth to school and whatnot. So, it has a similar design aesthetic with the enhanced pavement surfacing that, you know, has some texture to it, or has a stamp to it that kind of illustrates the whole theme itself. But it would also include all the normal things of, you know, benches and trash receptacles, and I think the, you know, not to talk outside of the landscape part of it, but the Sparks Boulevard itself, that trail in the middle of the road is one of the most unique things about that trail. It goes all the way down the south connector, it goes all the way up, you know, further north. And so, doing what we can in this corridor to kind of emphasize that with this project, I think is a great thing that we can be doing. And these little nodes are kind of capsules of doing that. And so, having one at the north, pretty much as far south as we can go is Prater Way, that's kind of where the limits of the opportunity exist. But doing them kind of in that main body of the North Truckee Drain is really the goal of this project. And so, again, we're doing it with natural materials, the mileage markers, and as many native plantings as we can, just to, we fully respect the maintenance responsibility that this would, you know, generate, because it's changing the existing condition, so.
So this is, this is just like a vision board. So basically, we take all the elements that we talked about, benches, trash receptacles. We want to key in all of the native flora and fauna of the North Truckee Drain. So there's design details that you can do to kind of display that. We, trail and mileage markers, as we mentioned before, we could do like a native leaf pattern on the concrete. If we have a decorative handrail, we could kind of enhance that with some, some kind of context-sensitive designs. Also, for the actual drain itself, we could enhance the actual drain. For slope stabilization, we could add more riprap and boulders and things like that to keep it from eroding. And then, we do have quite a few retaining walls on the project, so we would want to kind of make sure that those blend in with the environment instead of working against it, so. And then, we also show here some potential fitness elements.
And so, you know, just to kind of recap a little bit more about the project, so, I said it earlier, you know, this south phase is gonna go to construction. We're ramping up right now to put that out to bid. That's gonna go through the winter, probably through, hopefully we get it done before Thanksgiving, that's my goal. We've started the outreach process for that, so we've been communicating with the Legends Development, and there's the petrol gas station down kind of in the south by Greg and Wild Island. There's a lot of key business stakeholders in this area that will be, you know, communicating with individually. You know, the Legends is somewhat unique, because there's lots of tenants and lots of different owners. And so, that's gonna be a unique group to be working with through the project. But I think doing night work and having the focus of that construction impact during the nighttime, that's outside of those normal business hours in this non-residential area, will be a big benefit to the project. I talked about the environmental assessment. We're gonna be working on that. There's gonna be a public comment period that we'll be doing a lot of outreach for, that I encourage all of you to participate in and look into. And then, as we talked about now, we're continuing to work on the phase two design. So, this north phase that includes this landscape that we're talking about, this is gonna be ongoing through, you know, next year at this time, more or less. It's quite a big project. There's a lot of work to do for us. And then, we are working to do the phase two construction in that 2024, 2025 timeframe. So we're very heightened in our sensitivity to traffic control impacts. And we know that there, I think there's another presentation or some other agreements that we're gonna be working on for the Pyramid 395 Connector project. And that's gonna be its own big traffic control bottleneck project that's gonna impact traffic flow north and south to Spanish Springs and Northern Sparks, and even further north. And so, we don't want multiple big projects going on at the same time. So we're being very specific with the timing of this Sparks Boulevard project. So we get this early action project done now, we provide some quick relief before the Pyramid project starts. The Pyramid project will start, we'll be working on the design of the south phase, and then the south phase will go, or sorry, the north phase, then the north phase will go into construction once that Pyramid project is complete. So we're not cutting off access. That's a bad thing. And so, there's all of our contact information. I really, if anybody has questions, we always like to answer questions. And so, we are here to answer any questions if you do have any-
Questions from the council.
The project.
Mr. Anderson?
Just want to start out by saying thank you for this presentation, and thank you for the work that everyone has done on it. It runs right through my ward, so I get a lot of people that have voiced concerns about what was gonna happen. One of their biggest fears was that it was gonna go underground and they'd never see it. So, what you've done is enhanced it. It's awesome. I love it. I've been encouraging people to reach out to y'all, because I hadn't heard of any, you know, public meetings or anything like that yet. So, if you could keep us up to date on that, that would be great. I'll make sure that I pass along your information, because they're wanting to know who to contact.
Yeah.
The other question I have is, is this up on the RTC website now?
Yeah, so it's on the, this presentation's not on the website, but we'll get those things where they need to be. So we have an RTC website. We also have a project-specific website. So it's sparksboulevardproject.com, and that's linked through the RTC website.
Okay.
So if you go to RTC website, it'll, it'll connect you to the project-specific website. And the project-specific website has those alternatives analysis that we talked about. It has lots of information there.
Awesome. And specific, the most vocal, has been a group that has condos right along there by what would be Springland. In fact, it's Springland Village.
Yep.
And if I'm looking at this correctly, the proposal is showing for a sound barrier along there. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we have done a lot of those technical studies that would be associated with the environmental assessment that kind of really drives the need for noise barriers or sound walls. And so, essentially, the way to kind of think about it is, there's some existing noise barriers along Sparks Boulevard, and there's some near residential that there's none. Essentially, wherever there is not a noise wall, our analysis obviously decide, like, defines that we do need a noise barrier there. So, the quick way to summarize that is, where there's no barrier next to residential, we are gonna be putting barrier next to residential.
You just made several hundred people happy, so, thank you, thank you. That's awesome. Appreciate it.
And we're gonna be doing a lot, there's, you talked about outreach. We are gonna be doing public comment period for our environmental assessment, and that's the, one of the best places to start that process, because we want to do all the work first to know what we're talking about. So that when we go talk in factual details with those people, we have the science, and the analysis, and the things necessary to have those factual details, so. Yeah. Sure.
Mr. Dare?
Yes, thank you so much for being here. And the Bering and Sparks piece really interests me. One is just safety hazard-wise. We have tons of students there, like, ongoing all day long. So whatever's there, just, I'd like to know if you've thought about how to make sure we're communicating well, because not only do I drive that and see some crazy activity there at times, and people not paying attention to things, but then also whatever we put in, it's gonna be great to be beautified. That's awesome. But also, if you're not careful, it could hide somebody who, kids walk in things.
Great point. And so, just a little backing for, backing up a little bit. So, this project really started from a Sparks Corridor study. The Sparks Corridor study kind of defined this project, going only up to Springland, O'Callahan. When we got into the alternatives analysis, we defined, we identified that the needs of this project actually extend up to Bering. And then there was a big discussion, actually, with City of Sparks staff, and RTC staff, and design consultants. How far do we take it? And it really became clear that we needed to go through the Bering intersection. So, I'm really glad you said that, because it really drives home the need for us to go that far. It drives home the need for the safety improvements that we're gonna be doing there. And so when we get to that stage, it'd be great to come back and, you know, present that with you, what we're doing, and get any feedback that you may have, or if, you know, you have comments. We love comments, so feed us the comments, and we can take action.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
And as a trail designer, I mean, we're always thinking about safety and wellbeing. I mean, that's one of our primary considerations, so. We don't want to put any big walls up, or big huge hedges, so people can hide behind. We kind of try to utilize the SEPTED guidelines as much as possible, which is crime prevention through environmental design, so. Definitely will keep that in mind.
Thank you for your presentation, and I'll just, I just have to say, when I'm thinking of Sparks Boulevard, obviously, the first thing that comes to my mind for all of our residents, too, is traffic. And how can we, with our increasing population, move more cars through our main arterials faster and safer? And so I'm excited about the fact we're widening it, and that really was kind of just the top priority on my mind, not really envisioning how beautiful it could be. And so I'm excited to see, you know, what the actual activity areas and design aesthetics, and the nature, and the walking, and preserving the North Truckee Drain, which a lot of people don't even know. I mean, they think it's just a ditch through the middle of town. And so, not encapsulating it, but enhancing it, and the public's, as we look at more multimodal and trying to get people out of cars and onto bikes, and walking, and jogging, and bringing strollers and dogs and all of that, this, this project is exciting, because I think it'll do all of those things. So thank you for the presentation. I can't wait until you get started.
Thank you.
And just from me, Councilman Abbott and myself are not avid bike riders, but- You can tell by our physiques that we are training for, yeah, the French Alps. But, how about, if I get on the trail at Bering and Sparks Boulevard, can I make it to the river when this is finished?
Yeah, so-
That's, to me, is, there's no way to really get to our river from the City of Sparks.
Yeah.
And it's, it's very disheartening when you're driving, riding a bicycle down McCarran Boulevard with forty-foot semi-trucks within two feet of you.
So the north end of the project near Bering, you'll be able to get on the trail. It'll navigate down. Once you get south of Prater, the, you know, the ditch is, goes under the road and kind of goes off to the other side. And so, from there, we're gonna have bike lanes and shared use paths, so you can take either one. Once you get closer to Lincoln, the shared use path actually becomes a sidewalk adjacent to Legends. And then, from there, you'll be able to go south over the freeway, south on that shared use path, all the way down to Greg Street, to the southeast connector, which gets you to the river trail at-
At the Truckee River, Greenbelt.
So, it'll be a separated for bicycles and pedestrians from the traffic, or it'd be just a sidewalk?
Yeah, it'll be sidewalk, but it's a ten-foot wide sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we, I think is important for our community. Especially, you know, we're trying to revitalize our river, and more access we have to it, the better.
Yeah.
And I would not ever ride my children along McCarran to try and get to the river. It's, it's pretty dangerous. But this sounds, this sounds beautiful, and I'm looking forward to seeing it done. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
All right, we're moving on to consent items. Anyone wishing to pull a consent on them? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve consent items eight-one through eight-three as submitted.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimous. Okay, general business. This one, I might have to put my glasses on. I can't see anymore, which is not, also not good for riding along McCarran. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the inter-local cooperative agreement AC 5826 with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County for projects included in the FY 23 program of projects. Amber?
Mayor, members of council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. The agreement for your consideration today is really setting up the relationship between the City of Sparks and the Regional Transportation Commission, the RTC, to work together on our regional roads. This is an annual agreement we bring before you every year, and I'm very honored to introduce you to Brian Stewart, the RTC Director of Engineering. He has a presentation to go through, and we'll go through his POP, his Program of Projects for FY 23.
Thank you, Amber. Slip that over. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson. Good afternoon, City of Sparks Councilmembers. I'm Brian Stewart, Director of Engineering for the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County. And I'm happy to be here today for seeking the approval of the inter-local cooperative agreement, you'll hear me call it ICA, for the FY 2023 program of projects. This is a yearly ICA, is the tool RTC and the City of Sparks use to implement the projects and the programs for the street and highway projects within the City of Sparks. NRS describes the process for which RTC must follow to ensure the fuel tax projects and programs are approved each year. The process includes priorities that are established by the Regional Transportation Plan, of which are under, we're under the 2050 plan right now. Each project and program must meet certain criteria established by NRS and approved by the RTC Board. In addition, the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners must authorize the projects and the use of fuel tax on the projects. The projects listed here today were approved by the County Board of Commissioners on January 25th. Continuing from our past couple of years, the regional pavement preservation program and reconstruction will be funded with $22.5 million of fuel tax. The program keeps our existing regional infrastructure in good shape. It is a priority that has been set by the Regional Transportation Plan and approved by the RTC Board. Currently, the 2050 RTP sets regional roads to have a pavement condition index, PCI, of eighty or above. The existing PCI that we have today is at eighty-two for the regional roads. We achieve these goals through focusing on three specific areas of taking care of our payments. We have the preventative treatments. These are the smaller, low-cost improvements, such as slurry seals that you'll see out there, minor repairs, to keep our roads that are in good shape in, for cheaply, continue that life. The middle range is corrective. That's a $2 million set aside. Those are typically your mill and- typically your mill infills or your overlays, a little bit more intensive, uh, for the structural section of the road. And then finally, the fourteen million is reserved for major, uh, structural replacement of the road. So the road has failed, it's reached that point where it needs to be built up from the bottom, uh, completely to the top. The program is, uh, supported by the Payment Preservation Committee. The committee ensures that the correct projects are moving forward, considering all the conflicts of utilities or private development. The success of the Payment Preservation Committee is attributed to the participation of the City of Sparks staff being subject matter experts and always providing the excellent participation required for the program. This is the second year of an increase of funding in traffic signals and intelligent transportation systems. The program, in short, looks for new, uh, where new traffic upgrades are needed, so that will be new traffic signals, upgraded existing signals, and sometimes geometric improvements to improve, improve the flow of traffic. The program is listed in the twenty-fifty, is programmed for ten million per year, and like the Payment Preservation Committee, a similar regional committee is used to determine the projects based on need. The TOMs, or Traffic Operations and Management, has successfully worked to establish projects as part of the expert, uh, participation of the City of Sparks staff. And then the larger RTP projects are always listed separately. As we continue to grow in our region, traffic pressures increase in our region, uh, and we need to be looking at that into the long term. The Pyramid-Sparks intersection is a major connection, and capacity is needed. RTC plans to start preliminary design to ensure the capacity requirements for the future are supported here. The project is currently planned as a separated interchange, of which could eventually be, uh, tied into the future phases of the Pyramid Three-Ninety-Five Connector project. And lastly, the map before you is a quick summary of the new and ongoing projects in the City of Sparks, which we're so excited to be working on. Uh, over the next few, uh, years, you'll see a tremendous amount of construction work and investment into, uh, the City of Sparks and our region as a whole, uh, in transportation and capacity, as well as multimodal and micro modes. So currently, the Audi Wells, uh, project is underway. Uh, it is scheduled, uh, is it on schedule and within budget? Actually, it's a little ahead of schedule. We didn't get as much snow and bad weather, and so things are moving along nicely. Um, that project is, uh, a project website is audiewellsproject.com. Please visit that, that's where project updates are, and there's actually some cameras there that you can go on, and you can look at the, you know, status of the project and how the contractor's doing as they, uh, construct, mainly they're on the, the walls, the screening walls right now. So that project, uh, full on, um, multimodal, micro modes, encouraging, uh, other alternate modes of transportation, is going to redefine and, and just re-change that, uh, corridor tremendously. I won't talk about the Sparks Boulevard project, because you had a great presentation on that just here recently, and so that's an exciting project that's also moving forward. You'll also hear probably about, uh, in the next presentations or so, the Pyramid Highway Three-Ninety-Five Connection, so phase one of that project is under design, and that is leading that project. RTC contributed substantially to the funding, including application and, uh, receiving of a raised grant to help support that widening from Queen Way, and then, uh, the improvements go up to Golden View. So that is, uh, a plan to have a shovel in the ground, uh, next calendar year, and so excited to, to move that along. And then, uh, the pavement preservation project that is a full reconstruct, uh, this, uh, year that will be going is the Fourth Street from Greenberry Drive to Galt Way, and so that will be an exciting project that, uh, is three, uh, estimated almost three-point-two million dollar investment, and, uh, we would be, um, uh, putting that out to bid, uh, probably in August, and then hopefully, we would start in the spring of twenty-three and finish this in, uh, twenty-three, uh, at the end of the summer. So with that, I'd happy to answer any questions, um, and, uh, provide any more information you may need.
Questions from the council. Must have done a great job.
Well, thank you very much. Always happy to come before the city council here at Sparks and showcase the good work that we do together, uh, as, uh, our two jurisdictions, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to nine-point-two.
Mayor Lawson? Looking for some action.
You wanted some action?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Donald? Okay. Mr. Anderson. I'm sorry. I was thinking we're still in presentation mode.
I move to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement, AC five-eight-two-six, with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County for projects included in the FY twenty-twenty-three program of projects.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to nine-point-two. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of interlocal agreement, AC five-eight-two-eight, with the Nevada Department of Transportation to participate in construction oversight activities for the Pyramid Highway US Three-Ninety-Five Connection Phase One Project. Amber.
Mayor, Members of Council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. So this agreement before you is between the City of Sparks and the Nevada Department of Transportation, Endot, and it is related to the Pyramid Highway US Three-Ninety-Five Connector Phase One Project. Uh, on your screen is a project vicinity map. This map will begin at Queen's Way, uh, from Queen's Way up to Los Altos. The project will, uh, widen the road from four lanes to six lanes, and then for the entire length of the project, from Queens to Golden View, um, they include multimodal improvements. This is a very large project, uh, to help capacity needs, it's also help multimodal throughout our region, and this first agreement is seeking to set a relationship between the two, between the two entities. Through this, we will be involved in, in pre-construction, design, and construction activities. Uh, what specifically we'll do is we'll review plans in the pre-construction phase and provide any comments. We'll assist with any utility relocations through our current franchise fees as necessary, our franchise agreements, I'm sorry, as necessary. Uh, we'll work with our contractor to issue an encroachment or a street cut permit for the project. Um, we'll observe, review, and inspect specific, um, elements as they're constructed on the project, and we will participate in the final construction walkthrough for acceptance. Um, Endot will continue to advertise, award, and administer the project, and they will maintain ownership of the project. Uh, this agreement is intended to end once construction and acceptance of the project is complete. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, as you heard before, this is a partnership, not only with Sparks, but between Endot and the RTC. The Endot project manager, Nanette Maxwell, is here, should you have any questions for her, and Doug Malloy of the RTC is, um, RTC project manager.
Okay, questions from the council. Mr. Dare.
Yes, on this, I know we're putting in bike lane and things like that coming up the quarter. How far does that end up going? Does it go all the way?
The shared use, the, uh, the multimodal and the shared use does go the entire way.
All the Golden View, and then the future, we hope for better, or whatever's going to happen next, is the idea?
So this is phase one of six phases of the ulter, of the ultimate connector, um, entire project. Uh, what you heard previously with Mr. Stewart was that, uh, great separated interchange at Sparks. That's where the connector takes off along almost our ridge line, um, alignment, to later tie in up at Dandini Park.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
Yeah. I move to approve interlocal agreement, AC five-eight-two-eight, with the Nevada Department of Transportation to participate in construction oversight activities for the Pyramid Highway US Three-Ninety-Five Connection Phase One Project.
Uh, Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
They've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, nine-point-three. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of interlocal agreement, AC five-eight-two-nine, with the Nevada Department of Transportation to maintain certain improvements, Endot will construct with the Pyramid Highway US Three-Ninety-Five, US Three-Ninety-Five Connection Phase One Project. Amber.
Mayor, Members of Council, Jill Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. This is the second agreement for the project that we just discussed, that widening from Queens, uh, to Los Altos, and then the multimodal up to Golden View. Uh, this one is a maintenance agreement. Um, through this agreement, um, let me step back one second. Through this project, they're constructing a shared use path on the east side of the project. If they can have the overhead, please. This is a ten-foot shared use path that starts, what you're seeing right now is Queens and far to the north, and to orientate yourself to your right is north. Um, the red line is what we are, um, asking or considering for, for consideration to maintain. It goes up and over the hill.
That was scary.
Uh, this is the disk drive approach. We go through the disk drive approach, through the Shoppers Way approach, through the Los Altos approach, and to the city limit. The city limit is, um, is where, is that dash line that you see on your right, where it picks up with Washoe County. So as said, the project is constructing this ten-use path, um, this ten-foot multi-use path. It includes path signage and striping, decorative rocks and boulders, as well as some decorative sculptures in this area. Should you choose to approve this maintenance agreement, the City of Sparks will be responsible, uh, for the activities done on a regular basis to allow working condition of the trail, to quote directly from the agreement, "to keep the shared use path free of debris, snow, and ice as necessary to maintain a fit, safe, and fully functional level of performance." We will also be wholly responsible for weed mitigation, as well as, uh, will be responsible for invoicing the department for any repair over fifteen-hundred dollars. So again, this is intended for routine maintenance, not significant maintenance. Should anything we do go over fifteen-hundred dollars, uh, we would work with the department and invoice them for such. Under this, Endot maintains, uh, responsibility, again, for that significant maintenance. Um, they also will maintain and operate the concrete barrier that is between this path and the roadway. Um, you see that little dash kind of line, that's a, a pa, a barrier that is separating this path from the traffic and the roadway, and that will maintain and operate that barrier. Uh, they'll provide debris removal and noxious weed abatement yearly. And then, again, they will fund and help us with any repairs over fifteen-hundred dollars. Uh, we've worked with maintenance staff to come up with a solution, uh, that we, that we support, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council. Mr. Dare.
Yeah, so with that, with us taking on that responsibility, I know in the past, it seems if there was, um, something to be done, we couldn't do something because of Endot right away or something like that, whether it's, uh, signs that shouldn't be there, or, uh, some homeless situations, whatever. Does this put this in our jurisdiction now, because we're taking on that maintenance, or is that still stay with Endot?
Only for maintenance of the path. So as it's defined in the agreement, it's the improvement. So the improvements are defined as that shared use path, the signage, the sculptures, and the boulders, so they, they still own and operate it.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve interlocal agreement, AC-dash-five-eight-two-nine, with Nevada Department of Transportation, Endot, to maintain certain improvements. Endot will construct with the Pyramid Highway slash the US Three-Ninety-Five Connection Phase One Project.
Uh, Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. All right, moving on, nine-point-four. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a participation agreement, AC five-eight-two-seven, with Nevada Health Partners to obtain Northern Nevada Medical Center Hospital Services for members of the city's group health plan for March first, twenty-twenty-two, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and an estimated amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty in the first year, and seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine-two-sixty-four in the second year, and authorization for the city manager to ex, execute the participation agreement. You did that to me on purpose, because you're a short timer. Put that long-winded explanation in there.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Members of City Council. Jill Valdez, your acting human resources director. For your consideration today is a participation agreement to join a contract that Nevada Health Partners negotiated. The city has a participation agreement with Northern Nevada Medical Center, but it's set to expire on February twenty-eighth, today, of twenty-twenty-two. A new two-year participation agreement will allow the city to continue the current relationship with Northern Nevada Medical Center that provides in-network hospital services in the City of Sparks at discounted group pricing. Uh, the city establishes contracts for medical services for the city's group health benefits self-insured plan in one of two ways. One, the city can directly negotiate with the vendor, or two, the city can participate in Northern Nevada Business Group on Health, or NVBGH, contracts. The NVBGH advantage is that the medical contracts are collectively negotiated by a coalition of employers to obtain group pricing discounts. Claims costs under this participation agreement are estimated to increase eight percent year one and five percent year two, for a plan year one cost of fifty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and a plan year two increase in cost of thirty-seven-five-hundred-eighty-four dollars. This is based upon past utilization. Uh, claims utilization is comprised two factors. One, the number of claims filed, and two, the cost per claim. Actual costs in these two plan years will vary based upon the actual utilization rates. The cost increases for this fiscal year, twenty-two, were anticipated and are included in the current budget. The cost increases that affect, uh, the coming fiscal years of twenty-three and twenty-four will be included in this year and next year's budget. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council. Ms. Bybee.
So Jill, you're, you're saying that, um, our current agreement, this is just extending our current agreement for Northern Nevada Medical Center. I don't know why I was under the impression we could only use them for emergency services, not regular, um, hospitalization surgeries, things that we were scheduled, you know, pre-scheduled for. Um, is that still the case? It's emergency services only?
So this is hospital services. I think what you're referring to is that Northern Nevada has a medical group of doctors, which is not included in this contract.
Okay.
So if you had a doctor through that group before, you could still see the doctor, it just wouldn't be in network.
Okay.
But if you go to Northern Nevada Medical Center, uh, for hospital services, that this is covered. And in answer, uh, yes, we had a prior participation agreement with Northern Nevada for these same, uh, services, and so we're looking to, uh, to extend that, basically, with a new participation agreement.
Okay. So it's just for the hospital services?
Correct.
If I needed knee surgery, I couldn't schedule there if my doctor was not within the, it, it would be out of network, correct?
Potentially. It, it depends on who your doctor is.
Okay.
I would recommend to anybody that has that question, that they, um, call Hometown Health, and they can get the specifics of the doctor and the services, whether that would be considered.
Okay.
But the hospital services would be covered under this contract.
And will this be the same for the new Northern Nevada Medical Center's second new property that's coming online, or is that something that negotiates later when that hospital facility opens, which is pretty soon, I think?
Mindy thought she was going to get out.
Mindy, for the record. Uh, this is a separate contract, so this is only for the Sparks location. So once that would open, then we could talk about, um, adding that hospital, but we would have to wait until the Renown contract is up, so for now, just the Sparks Hospital.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, no questions. I actually just want to say thank you for working on this. I, the thought of not being able to use the one hospital located in our own city was, uh, kind of disturbing, so thank you for the work you did to put this together.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm looking for a motion. A rather lengthy motion. Mr. Anderson.
I'll take on a lengthy motion. I move to approve the participation agreement, AC five-eight-two-seven, with Nevada Health Partners to obtain Northern Nevada Medical Center Hospital Services for members of the city's group health plan for March first, twenty-twenty-two, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and an estimated amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty dollars in the first year, and seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand- in the first year and seven hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-four thousand in the second year. authorize the city manager to execute the participation agreement.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, nine point five. Consideration discussion of possible approval of the funding allocation of twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for FY twenty-two and two hundred thirty-eight thousand and fifty dollars for FY twenty-three as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for the twenty twenty-two special event season. Francine.
Hello, good afternoon. This is Francine Burge, for the record, Special Event Supervisor. I'm before you today to ask for your approval for funding for twenty thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-two and two hundred and thirty-eight thousand fifty dollars for fiscal year twenty-three as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for the two thousand two, twenty-two special event season. This funding comes from lodging tax funds through the RSCBA. The Tourism and Marketing Committee is the assigned committee that makes recommendations on these funds. And the funds have historically been used for special events and for marketing purposes. On January twenty-seventh, the committee recommended funding distributions based on applications submitted by local event producers. The available balance before this expenditure is two hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars for fiscal year twenty-two and three hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, assuming the funding from the RSCBA allocation of one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. This concludes my presentation, and I welcome any questions.
Questions from the council. So basically, what we did was what people asked for. We gave them a ten percent increase because we didn't fund anyone last year. And knowing that the cost of police and other services are going up is to try and offset some of that. Mr. Dare.
My only question has to do with our river things that we do. Is that not something that we could have funded through this? Or is that something we just do?
River.
Our river, we had our parties down there, our concerts and all those kind of things.
The chief does that out of the police budget.
Oh. Beautiful. I just think that, I mean, I don't know where, how we do that, but I think that is a wonderful thing that we've added to our table. And I just didn't see it on the list, so just to throw it out there, I don't know where we get that.
Actually, where does that money come from?
We will be doing, that comes out of the general fund. We will be doing that again this summer.
Thank you.
And we're looking actually, without getting too far in the weeds, at expanding it a little bit.
Awesome. Yeah, I think the community loves that. Okay, any other questions from the council? All right, I'm looking for a motion, Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve the funding allocation of twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for FY twenty-two and two hundred and thirty-eight thousand fifty dollars for FY twenty-three as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for the twenty twenty-two special events.
Mr. Anderson.
Second motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Francine. Item nine point seven. Consideration discussion of possible authorization to purchase nine vehicles from Corwin Ford for four hundred five thousand, oh, I missed, nine six, excuse me. I'm getting ahead of myself. Well, they're both purchasing vehicles.
That's right.
Authorizing purchase twelve vehicles from Champion Chevrolet, six forty-seven five oh two dot ninety-three utilizing state Nevada contract nine nine SWC dash S one four nine five. Mark.
Mayor, Members of Council, Mark Anderson, the Assistant Public Works Manager, here today to ask for your consideration and possible authorization of an expenditure to Champion Chevrolet to purchase twelve vehicles, including in the vehicle purchase is eight police patrol vehicles, two fire vehicles, one vehicle for our municipal court, and one spare police vehicle for when accidents happen.
No.
We will use the state contract that you mentioned in the title. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council. All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I don't know where you found those prices, but I hear all the car prices are going up, but.
They went up.
Yeah, I was telling you, that's a good price on twelve. I move to authorize the purchase of twelve vehicles from Champion Chevrolet for six hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and two dollars and ninety-three cents, utilizing state of Nevada contract nine nine SWC dash S one four nine five.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously. All right, now let's do nine point seven. Spread some money around the valley here. Consideration discussion of possible authorization to purchase nine vehicles from Corwin Ford in the amount of four hundred five thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-five cents using the state of Nevada contract nine nine SWC dash NV two one dash eight eight one one. Mark.
Mayor, Members of Council, again, Mark Anderson, the Assistant Public Works Manager, here to ask for your consideration and possible authorization to purchase nine, excuse me, nine vehicles from Corwin Ford. Seven of these vehicles are approved in our standard fleet replacement. Two of them were on new needs. Of the vehicles, six are for public works. One replacement for code enforcement, one replacement, or one new need for code enforcement, and one new need for our USA Locates, which is the person that paints all the stuff on the ground to tell you where underground utilities are buried. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question from the council. Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I move to authorize the purchase of nine vehicles from Corwin Ford for four hundred and five thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-five cents, utilizing state of Nevada contract NN SWC dash NV two one dash eight eight one one.
Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Mark. Nine point eight. Consideration discussion of possible approval of an interlocal agreement AC five eight two zero between the City of Sparks and Washoe County to allow the conducting and holding of the twenty twenty-two primary and general elections in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars on the button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Lisa Hunterman, your city clerk for the record. I have to admit, I was so excited to have a copy of the interlocal agreement for you today that I uploaded it to your agenda system in a method that you are not able to open on the tablet. So that's why you receive a paper copy today. I'm actually before you today for two items that are related to each other. One is the interlocal agreement between the City of Sparks and Washoe County for the conduct of the elections. If approved, the City of Sparks would contract with Washoe County to conduct the primary and general elections on behalf of the City of Sparks. In return, the city will pay the county fifteen cents per registered voter, plus any additional costs that would be above and beyond what would normally be incurred by the county in the regular conduct of the election. The budget is set for forty thousand dollars to cover any circumstances that may arise, such as additions of ballot questions, misinformation and errors by the city, automatic and same-day registrations. However, historically, the amount of the election generally runs under twenty thousand dollars for the city. This year, the agreement does look a little different than in previous years. Language has been added to the agreement to ensure that city staff is able to participate in all aspects of the election and is not turned away for any reason. Language has also been added memorializing the county's commitment to verify all voter signatures on mail-in ballots in accordance with AB three twenty-one. The county will also be providing the city with statistics after the election regarding the number of mail-in ballots that were received and the signature verification process on those, including ballots cast, any ballots that would have been said to be cured where they had to follow up on the signature, and then any votes that did not get counted due to the inability to cure those votes. Lastly, the, I apologize. Lastly, language is added that will allow the City of Sparks to assist the registrar of voters in doing ballot or voter list maintenance and cleanup, which is one of the big things for this year. Staff recommends approval of the interlocal agreement with Washoe County, and that does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council. Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, thank you for your hard work on this. I especially appreciate adding some additional language so that we can make sure the City of Sparks and our staff is helping oversee. I mean, I understand it just makes fiscal sense for us to have the Washoe County conduct the election, but our oversight and our ability to be a part of that process is critically important from, you know, verifying signatures to cleaning up voter rolls to regain the trust of, maintain the integrity of the election to regain trust for those who have lost trust in our election system and really making sure the City of Sparks has an active role of that, role in that is critically important. And I thank you for all your work in putting this together. I think it's a very strong statement and protects and maintains, you know, I think what my priority is, and I think our priority as a city is, so thank you.
Mr. Dare.
I want to thank you as well. And for me, my main goal, and I think just swearing city council hat, is that I can look at you and say, how'd we do? And no matter what anybody else says, you can say, we're good. And I think this brings that to the table. That is, I think our responsibility as city council, and we hire people to do the things that you're doing, and so thank you. And so my only question to you, do you feel like this brings us to that place that when we look at you and we're done, you can go, I feel good?
Thank you, Councilman Dare. I actually do feel very confident that we will be able to be, have confidence in the results that we receive this year.
And that's what I'm looking for, thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else? Miss, we've seen none, well, that's, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement AC five eight two zero with Washoe County to provide for the conducting and holding of the primary and general elections in the City of Sparks for two thousand twenty-two in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to item ten, public hearings and action items unrelated to planning and zoning. Second reading, public hearing discussion of possible adoption of bill number two seven nine one and ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of primary elections in the City of Sparks on the fourteenth day of June, twenty twenty-two, and the general election of the City of Sparks on the eighth day of November, twenty twenty-two, identifying municipal offices seeking candidates, authorizing Washoe County to conduct the election, and setting the filing fees for declaration of candidacy. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Lisa Hunterman, your city clerk for the record. Obviously, the next item that I bring to you is bill two seven nine one. Pursuant to NRS and Spark City Charter, section five, the city has to provide by ordinance for the holding of the primary and the general election in the City of Sparks. For the year of twenty twenty-two, the primary election will be held on the fourteenth day of June, and the general election will be held on the eighth day of November. The bill also identifies city council member offices in wards two and four, a municipal court judge for department one, and a mayor as the municipal offices seeking candidates. Following the approval of the previous agenda item, the interlocal agreement with Washoe County, approving this bill will also authorize Washoe County to conduct the election on behalf of the city. The filing period for candidates opens on March seventh and will close on March eighteenth at five P M. Now, lastly, this bill sets the filing fees for those declarations of candidacy at thirty dollars. Staff recommends approval of bill two seven nine one. And as a reminder, this is a public hearing item. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close it and bring it back to the dice. Any questions? No questions, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Get the other long one. I move to adopt bill number. I'm hitting the button too quickly. I move to adopt bill number two seven nine one, an ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of primary elections in the City of Sparks on the fourteenth day of June, twenty twenty-two, and a general election in the City of Sparks on the eighth day of November, twenty twenty-two, identifying municipal offices seeking candidates, authorizing Washoe County to conduct the election, and setting the filing fees for declarations of candidacy.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would just really quick like to say thank you to Chief Assistant City Attorney Wes Duncan for his assistance with the interlocal agreement.
I understand he was very involved, so thank you, Wes. Okay, we have no planning and zoning public hearing action items. How about comments from the public? Madam Clerk, we have any comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, we did not receive any additional.
We have no public comment. That brings us to comments from the announcements from the mayor and city council and city manager. Mr. Manager, you have anything?
Thank you to the mayor and council for your day today. We spent a lot of time together, did a lot of good work, and we appreciate the feedback that you gave us and the attention that you afforded us. Thank you.
Kind of feel like a mushroom, but hey. Anyone on the council have anything?
I do.
I knew you did. I'd only have to look this way.
I just want to say happy birthday. We got a couple of people happy birthdays on our dice. There you go. And so yay, happy birthday. Yeah, and Lisa.
And Lisa.
Donald and Lisa.
Donald and Lisa, and I see Mama Donna's here too. Celebrate her bouncing baby boy's birthday. All right, anyone else? Yeah, okay. Well, with that, we move on to my favorite topic, adjournment, if I could say it. We're adjourned.